I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item C, adjustments to the agenda.
Yes, members of the Board have three adjustments we'd like to make. We'd like to add item two on the new business budget update, add item three on the new business discussion and consideration of superintendent's contract, and add item four, a negotiations update with a possible executive session under one MRSA 4056A.
I make a motion to amend the agenda by adding the following to J, new business as recommended by the superintendent, two, budget update, three, discussion and consideration of superintendent of school's contract, and four, negotiations update.
I second that.
All those in favor? Item D, approval of minutes for December 13th, 2016.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the December 13th, 2016 Board meeting.
Second that.
Discussion. All those in favor? I'm going to stop here and I'm going to welcome Hayden Sattler to the Board. He's our student representative. Hayden, I'm going to ask you to wait one minute before you give your report, but I would like to welcome you.
Thank you.
Communications and correspondence.
We have a number of letters of retirement and resignation that I have circulated to the Board for your review, and I will address them in my report.
Thank you. Public participation. Item G, administrative board reports. We're going to start with our student report. Hayden, this is your time.
You can, Hayden, you can do it from right there if you'd like.
I miss Ledger.
I'd like to tell you about some accomplishments that have been made by student organizations at EHS over the past few months. Since the induction of sixteen members in October, the EHS National Honor Society has been involved in several community service activities. In November, they participated in the Ellsworth Rotary Annual Food Drive, and they also helped the Rotary Club build, helped Rotary Club with a building project at the SPCA. In December, they participated in the Maine Coast Memorial Hospital's annual poinsettia ball, and also helped the Festival of Trees at the Franklin Veterans Club. The NHS members have earned more than sixty hours of community service in just the last three months. The EHS National Art Honor Society held an art show in December. All art students at EHS displayed two or more pieces in the show. The National Art Honor Society painted furniture, which was auctioned off at the art show. Proceeds went to the NIHS fund. The EHS Art Program is hosting an empty bowls supper this Thursday. The public is encouraged to attend. A supper is five dollars for a student, or ten dollars per family. The proceeds for this will go to the EHS food pantry. And lastly, the EHS senior class will be hosting a highlighter dance in March with ER tour as a DJ, and surrounding schools will be in attendance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Building administrative reports. Mr. Clifford?
Good evening. You have my report. I'll start from the bottom up. So our BAR visit, which we had on December 14th, I reported out last time because they were about to come, and feedback from that visit, and that is building assets, reducing risks, and it's just enhancing our freshman teaming. And feedback from Mary Ann Carcello, who is from BAR and in the Minneapolis area, said that we're more like a school that's in phase two rather than phase one, which really didn't surprise us because, you know, Ellsworth High School's had teaming for the last ten to twelve years. So it was great news to hear, and she'll come again in the spring. Students, our freshmen took the NWA's in the fall, they'll take them again in the spring. We're also turning in all of our grades after each quarter, and they're receiving all of that, and University of Minnesota is crunching all those numbers and will report back to us. Probably in the summer, we'll get that information. But she'll come back in the spring and possibly bring some others, other BAR people with her. One thing that she was really excited about is our teaming that we've added sophomore through seniors, and she doesn't know of a BAR school that has done that yet, and, you know, this is our second year that we're into that, so they're really excited and looking forward to our data, you know, from our sophomore, juniors, and seniors, and for years to come, and they want us to track that, and they're going to help us track that, and that may be something that they build into, you know, could be another federal grant. So I'll keep you posted, but we were happy, extremely happy with our visit. Congratulations for the three people that are going to be participating in the Maine State Music Festival, Ashley Hudson, Keith Eaton, and Miriam Nelson, and that will be in May, the beginning of May. And hopefully you got to watch a little bit about the episode about the white helmets on Sixty Minutes that are Holocaust and genocide studies. Mrs. Omler showed that in class, a lot of the students were really interested, did some more research, and saw the information that UNICEF is doing with them, and they plan a bunch of fundraisers with the Rotary Club, and they're going to send as much money as they can to UNICEF and help the people in Syria. So stay tuned for that, that'll be four months to come. Any questions on anything? Oh, and vacation standards recovery, we had twenty-seven students participate, and so we had three-hour sessions for three days, and so that's the highest participation rate that we've had. We've had quite a few students recover credits and recover standards for the first quarter. So I was happy to report that out, and, yeah, kids are flying in and out of the doors all over, all during vacation, and we'll continue to do that, and when the second quarter ends in two weeks, then our next standards recovery will be February vacation.
Excellent.
Questions?
I have a question. So when the people from BAR come, what does that look like? Are they going into classrooms, are we calling teachers?
Yep, so they, so like she, Mary Ann, sat in on our freshman team meeting. We had two of them going on at the same time, so she spent twenty-five minutes with each team, gave them feedback, and then she sat in on a risk review team, which is myself, assistant principal, the athletic director, two guidance counselors, and our social worker. She sat in on that, and then she sat in on an I-time, which is an I-time curriculum with the freshmen, and I think it was Jessica Frazier and Silas Ratten both did them because it was a math time, and so she sat on those and gave the teachers feedback. Yep, so it's pretty mu, it's pretty much a full day. And then she met with myself, met with some other freshman team members on their, during their free period, and had lunch, and she was there all day.
Thanks. Thank you. Ms. Newitt?
The bulk of my report tonight is the printout of the results of last May's MEA testing, so here we are eight months later. So I can't say these are fresh results, and certainly the eighth grade results that you'll see there, those kids have gone on to high school, but it's what we have. So this is what the state uses to measure the success of our students towards meeting common core state standards. I can say overall, we did considerably better than the state average, so coming to Ellsworth, Maine, your kid's going to get a better education than you are in most other places in the state, which is a good thing. The not-so-good thing is that we still have a relatively low percentage overall, not just Ellsworth, but the state as a whole, as far as actually meeting state standards. So to break it down just a little bit, because I won't go through every line here, students can be above state standards, at state expectations, below state expectations or well below expectations. So in ELA for grades three through eight, which is the population tested, there are five hundred and twenty-two students at EEMS that took those tests last May. Fifty-four percent of our students are at expectations or above expectations compared to the state at forty-nine percent. In math, forty-nine percent of EEMS students are at or above state expectations, only thirty-nine percent are at or above them statewide. In science, we do very, very well, seventy-one percent of our students are at or above, and compared to sixty-one percent across the state. You can break it down by grade level, so you, part of the report includes how each grade level has done, and, you know, in literacy, grades three and four were a little bit below, half the kids meeting or above, and five, six, seven, and eight, all those grades in literacy, we had fifty-nine, fifty-eight, sixty, and fifty-seven percent all at or above state expectations. So overall, a good profile there. And then in the area of math, we had out of the sixth grades tested, three out of the six were above the fiftieth percentile, three of them were below. Our current eighth grade class, just to, so Mr. Clifford knows he's getting a very nice group of kids coming up in the, you know, in the literacy, you know, fifty-seven percent were at or above, and in math, forty-four percent compared to thirty-five for the state. So you can look at it a couple different ways. I'm going to look at it as a good thing, you know, I think we've done really well, and we've worked really, really hard, and I can say, you know, just to address where we're, you know, we certainly want to have more kids at or above. Two things have happened in the last few weeks, actually one thing happened today, and that was the first day with our staff meeting with Debbie Richards, who is our new instructional coach that you hired at the last meeting. Today was the initial hour and a half meetings that she had with each of the four grade levels. And the other thing that's going on is we're having regularly scheduled meetings with the language arts teachers, with the literacy expert Candace Bray, you know, so the teachers are getting an infusion of assistance in their instruction, which is really nice. And again, it's kind of just starting, but, you know, there's only, there's only room to go up, and I'm glad we have some tools to help us move that way. So co-curricular news, I'm very proud of EEMS because we offer a lot of different activities for our kids, and about, well, last week was the first week of running clubs. We had twenty-two kids out running. They ran in between the chess meet and the basketball games that were going on today as well, so there's, all of that was happening. And then Wednesday of next week, our first of two robotics clubs will get underway, so that'll absorb about another forty-eight kids, so be able to do robotics because there's two teams. And we took a, I took a hundred and fifty kids to the Cartier Theater in Bar Harbor last Friday to see Rogue One, to reward them for their excellent behavior of zero or one, no more than one detention, and this year, as you know, we're doing habits of work ratings, and those kids got threes in all of their subjects for their howl rating. So we had a good time, and I do thank the six parents that rode on buses and watched kids. Thank you.
Amy Peterson-Roper. I'm going to start with our focus school news. As you know, two years ago, we were identified as a focus school, and we just had our second year report, and we are doing a great job. In fact, when we looked at the MEA results, one of the things that Jim did not mention is the reason why we became a focus school is because our gap between students who were identified with special needs or special education services and our regular typical developing kids, our gap was over forty percent, and our gap actually is only at thirty-eight percent, so we are closing in on that gap, slow but sure. I do want to thank our team, though, they do meet har, they do meet monthly or sometimes biweekly, and that's Moore Perry, Alexis Chapman, Jeanne Cal, Rochelle Brown, Jane Stackpole, Lori Johnston, Patricia French Eaton, April Clifford, Jim Newitt, Lynn Maddox, and Rachel Korman Ramos. As you know, we did agree to be part of the K-3 literacy pilot. A letter went home, I attached it with the board report to parents, children in kindergarten and grades one will have access to one-to-one iPad, and children in, children in grades two and three will be shared. We have just deployed the iPads to the teachers, the iPads are there for teacher, for children. We're getting ready to set that up. There'll be a seventy to seventy-five minute training with a bunch of folks from Apple to work with kids, and it's pretty exciting. I think that it comes with a literacy coach, so the technology piece is just a piece, but the best practice in literacy is going to be a really great thing for us, as you can tell by our literacy scores, it's the place that we need to work the most. I would like to thank the community and parents, and particularly teachers. We had another successful K through seven gift exchange, or gift, gifting day, we call it, where kids came and they were able to choose anything from their brothers and sisters, and sometimes they said, "It's for my sister," but it really is, we knew they didn't have a sister. Because the toys were so great, the gifts were awesome this year, and I think it really was a lot of fun for everybody. And Down East Horizons did come and help, as well as a bunch of other parents. Our vacation reading challenge, as last year, after the holiday break, we had less than we did for November, but we did, it's, it's gone up a little bit more. We had a hundred and seventy-five students who did participate. It was nine days of reading. We no longer do the video part of the EEMS Book Buzz, but there is a principal pick, so, and every classroom, a child's name is drawn out, and they come up, and I have set out this year, this particular season, it's winter books, and they get to pick, they do a book walk, and they get to pick a book, and then when I come into the classroom to read, as I do, they introduce what book they picked and why they picked it, and talk about why they were the person, and I know that's working because kids will stop me and they'll say, "I did my challenge." So that means that they are, they're beginning to be really excited about it, and that's what matters the most, is we want kids to be excited about reading. I can't believe it, but kindergarten registration is just two months away, and so I want to alert parents that that information's going to be going out, and we'll have it in March. Probably the next time I report to you, we'll have those dates. Our walk-in school bus, we have suspended until March. Part of our grant was ending in January anyway, so we extended our grant to the end of the school year. We only had one child who was walking regularly from Hancock Street down, and so we decided we would take it to the neighborhood that's right beside the school, and we had regularly four to six kids, and, but they're, it's too dangerous in the wintertime with the snowbanks, and they're not public plowed roads, they're private plowed, so we've just suspended it until probably the beginning of March, and then we'll finish off the school year with that. Do you want to talk about I-ready? We opened the window on Monday. However, we did find out yesterday that children who are part of the K literacy project or pilot, the common assessment they're going to be using is NWA, and so we are probably, we're in, we know that children, all children in grades one through eight will do math, and kids in grades four through eight will do reading, and we have not yet decided if we're just going to use the NWA. It's just a one-time baseline, and then we'll pick up the I-ready again in the spring, but we don't want to over-assess kids, so we're still trying to figure that out. And last, next month, we'll do a report or a presentation on our service of students, our SOS, that's a fourth grade project that I started about four years ago, and it really is about doing community work within our school, and we'll bring kids and they'll talk about it. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Amy?
Good evening. Amy Golds, Director at Hancock County Technical Center. It seems like it was so long ago, but I did want to publicly thank people for coming to our holiday buffet. We served over a hundred and seventy people on that day, within that hour and a half, and people enjoyed the food and the gingerbread creations. One of my favorite parts of the event, though, is the following day when all of the kindergartners come from EEMS and get to tour the school and learn about jobs, and some of them want to be every single job that pertains to every single program in a building. But it always ends with a smile, with decorating gingerbread cookies, and having milk with the culinary students, and learning how to use the decorators. A lot of kids have never done that before, so that's really fun. I have wanted to provide, last month, I had talked about how Carol McHeckern-Murphy, our social worker, is this year also working at HCTC, so I thought it was important to provide some numbers for you about who she's servicing and how. One of the things that I've liked the most about this model this year is that students that are Ellsworth High School students that don't always, schedule-wise, be able to see Carol, now can. When they're with us for two hours, it does provide more flexibility to allow a student to leave to receive services. And it also is a little bit more of a private setting. I think sometimes kids won't access the services in their high school because of perception, so she's able to catch some extra kids this year by having an office at HCTC part-time. The other thing that I really like is we're able to have some team meetings when we have a student that's at risk, whether it's an Ellsworth student or a student from another high school. If we're really noticing some things at our school, we can immediately have a team meeting and have her services and expertise added, which has been a really nice bonus. I wanted to, each month, I've been trying to provide you with a program update or something exciting in a program, and this month it was about welding. One of our own Ellsworth High School students is blossoming in the welding program at Bucksport High School, Ethan Kane. He received the Rotary Student of the Month in welding, but he's also going to be probably our earliest junior ever to earn his Level One certification through AWS. He is a madman when he gets into welding, he goes right to the booth and gets right to work, and he's doing a really great job. And then a senior from Bucksport, Solomon Drew, is on his way to beginning the 6G pipe welding certificate, and that's something that typically you get at the end of your second year at EMCC. So he's been able to kind of fast-track his certifications and put the time in to get that, so we're really excited about that. Coming up on Thursday, January 19th, we are going to have a first joint breakfast. We're bringing superintendents, high school principals, guidance counselors, and advisory board members together to talk about the changes in CTE over the last several years overall, talk about changes in CTE programming, and the upcoming recruitment cycle and application process for students. Then the following week, I'll be meeting with all Hancock County principals, hopefully they're all able to attend, and we'll be looking at crosswalks that we've done that crosswalk the industry standard to all of the high schools' graduation standards. I've taken all of the grad standards at all of the high schools and crosswalked them because they're all very different, but yet similar, to see where some of the commonalities are, and how can we uniformly county-wide give kids opportunities to demonstrate proficiencies with academic standards. So that's some work that we're going to do on the 24th and hope to come to some consensus on that, so kids across the county have the similar opportunities. Finally, something that I'm really excited about, Totally Trades is a CTE program that's done in conjunction with Venture Made, or as an offshoot of the Department of Labor for several years now, and it, for Penobscot and Hancock County, it's always been offered through UTC and Bangor, and they've always done a program out of Bangor, and it specifically targets girls in low female employment opportunities, so construction programs and trades that you typically don't see women accessing for employment. Over the years, we've tried to get something going in, at our school, instead of always sending Hancock County students to Bangor, and we haven't really been able to get anything going, and this year, we're having our first-ever Totally Trades at HCTC, and we're doing it in conjunction with Jackson Lab, which I'm really excited about. Ninth grade females is the target audience, and if it goes well, Jaxx is committed to doing this again in the spring for seventh and eighth grade girls. They want to pilot it first with ninth graders, because we feel like a lot of ninth graders haven't seen our new program yet, biomedical, so we're hoping that this is not only giving kids access to sciences in the ninth grade, but also kind of being used as a recruitment tool for us officially. What students are going to do is Jaxx is going to bring several aspects of what will happen at the mice production facility to us, and ninth grade girls will probably, hoping for fifty to seventy girls, will be put into four groups, and they will rotate through four stations. The day will start with a fifteen-minute overview of what Jackson Lab is, and all the different parts and structures and function of it, and they have a video that they'll show, and then girls will be broken up into four groups and rotate. In Group One, they're going to talk about animal care, how they take care of, maintain, and the husbandry of the animals when they're in their facilities. The second group is going to talk about production planning and how they breed colonies and the science behind that. And then in the third group, they're going to talk about surgical services and the types of surgeries that they do and have access to in that program. And then the fourth group is going to be with me, and they're going to tour the school, hear about all of the programs, and in each of the groups, they will have two to three biomedical students serving as mentors and helping the ninth graders with some of the stuff that Jaxx brings. So we're really excited about that first time collaborative with them, and hope that we can do it for seventh and eighth graders in the spring. Finally, two dates to share with you. January 26th is a spaghetti dinner for Skills USA again. Right now, we have seventy-two students that want to compete at Skills USA in March, so we need to fundraise, so that will be January 26th. And then finally, I'm sure many of you know about the Hancock County Leadership Program that is done in Ellsworth for business leaders or economic people. Each year, they take, I think, ten to fifteen people from the community that want to develop further leadership skills in Hancock County, and they rotate to different places. This year, they asked to add an education component, and that leadership group will be meeting at HCTC on January 31st. And part of their day in leadership training will be me doing an education segment on career and technical education, and how HCTC impacts the economic sector in Hancock County, and what our programs can do for that. So we're excited about that. It's the first time we've been asked to do that through the chamber, so we're excited to be a part of that, and that's on January 31st. Ow. My muscles. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Annie Sargent, Director of Adult Ed. I kind of feel like in January, my report is the course catalog, which you all would have received in the mail right before the end of the year, and we're ready for registration, so I encourage people to register. A couple things about registration, we, we need registrations five days ahead of the start of class, which is really hard. If you're busy, as I am, you put things off to the last minute, and we had, we get disappointed people every week who said, "What do you mean it was canceled?" But we have to have enough time to contact all the students and the instructors, so make sure that if you want to take a class, you don't put it off. So I wanted to spread the word about that. It's time to turn over a new leaf with the new year. People have time. I think I've done, in the last week, twelve new enrollments for our academic programming, so now's the time to, to give us a call and get yourself started, so that you can take advantage of the time of year that's a bit slower with other activities. We also are having our first annual open house. All of you, except you Hayden, because I didn't have your address, got, should have gotten an invitation over the weekend for our first open house, which is next Tuesday from 3:30 to 6:00, and we hope that you'll be able to come and spread the word about that as well. Just also wanted to talk about weather cancellations. A lot of people think, "Oh, I'm not going to sign up for classes because I don't want to go out in the snow in the winter," and one of the things that I love about adult ed is that it gives you things to do in the winter, and if, if the weather is bad, we cancel classes. So if Ellsworth schools are canceled during the day, we cancel our daytime and evening classes, and you can find out about that in all the ways that you can. It was reported last month, but on the TV stations and on our websites and so on, so I wanted to let people know about that, and if you have any questions, you can give us a call. And then last, we have our Office Skills Program. We're hoping to start that in March, and so we're looking for students who are interested in participating in that. So if you want to sort of jump-start your career and transition from one that isn't office-based to one that is, we have a very individualized and standards-based program that we can work with you on to get you started, so. Any questions about our programs?
Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Good evening, Board members, members of the audience and the viewing public. I want a happy and healthy New Year, a healthy 2017 to all, and welcome back to all our staff and students. And as I was sitting here, thinking about my report and listening to the reports that were just given, it never ceases to amaze me the amount of great things that are going on in Ellsworth schools, and I think tonight's reports are a microcosm of the great things that are going on in the school department. Throughout the reports, we heard about a lot of different student activities, both within the school and connected to the community, work on assessments, the success of the focused school work that's been going on at K through eight, a number of initiatives that are going on in our schools, the K through three literacy on in Ellsworth schools. And I think tonight's reports are a microcosm of the great things that are going on in the school department. Throughout the reports, we heard about a lot of different student activities, both within the school and connected to the community. Work on assessments, the success of the focused schoolwork that's been going on at K through eight, a number of initiatives that are going on in our schools. The K through three literacy project, the building assets reducing risks program, the holiday buffet at HCTC, individual student accomplishments, professional development activities that are going on, connections to our community, the expanded course offerings at adult ed program, and as Annie said, their first-ever open house. You know, it's really an indication of the great things that are going on, and it's a credit to the people that work for the Ellsworth School Department. So thank you to our administrators and our staff members for all the work that they're doing and for sharing that with the members of the public here this evening. My report is going to focus on a couple of areas. One is the 128th legislature, who is up and running. And while there, right now, as of this afternoon, only 11 bills related to education that have been printed, there are over 166 bill requests related to education that are going to be considered this session. And as a side note, there are 1,824 bill requests that have been submitted for consideration during this session. It's an amazing amount of work to take place over the next five or six months. Now, included under education are topics of retirement, which would be amendment of retirement laws, a budgetary impact one for us, contributions of teacher requirement costs, and employment after retirement. As you know, there are limitations on what employees can do in the length of time they can work after they retire. School leadership with professional development and, believe it or not, a candidate shortage that exists in the state of Maine. Student financial aid, funding. There are several bill titles related to the current funding formula and how they're going to amend it, and there's even one bill that's going to talk about repealing the current school funding formula. Also, a number of bills that are dealing with the recently enacted referendum on the 3% SRTAX. There's a number of bills with regard to charter schools, a number of bills regarding school choice, facilities and safety, graduation requirements, which impacts our work on proficiency-based transition, learning standards, special education certification, and removing barriers to working collaboratively and on a regional basis. It's a mouthful, but all of those bills could serve to impact the work that we do here in Ellsworth, and we'll certainly be on top of them over the next five months. Now, we're fortunate because Maine School Superintendent's Association and the Maine School Boards Association both have legislative committees who review all of these bills related to education and connected to education and take positions on them. And again, many of the bill titles indicate potential changes in how schools are funded and are going to have an impact on the local budget, and we'll touch on those a little bit later in the agenda when we talk about budget. As kind of a segue on regional initiatives, Hancock County Superintendent's Association has scheduled a special meeting on Thursday, January 19th to continue our discussion of potential opportunities for collaborative and regionally shared programs and initiatives. Just to make sure that people understand, this is not for school department and school district consolidation. This is to look at opportunities in which we can share resources, share programs, potentially collaborate on initiatives that can better serve our students here in the Hancock County region. And one of the reasons that we're considering a special meeting is because there is a special grant opportunity that's been put forth by the Department of Education, along with an application process that grants some funding that may be able to help initiate some of these opportunities. One of the things we want to do in terms of meeting on this is because the timeline for it is very short. It is due in the middle of February. It's a very lengthy application, but we want to be proactive here in Hancock County and determine whether or not it's feasible for us to pursue this application and find out if there is a benefit for the students, not only of Ellsworth but of Hancock County. So I'll report back to you on that in the coming months. We do have a number of letters of resignation and retirement that we'll include in your packet this evening. First, letters of resignation. Jake Hackett, who was an ed tech at Ellsworth High School and has also served as a girls' JV basketball and soccer coach, will be resigning. Valerie McCluskey, who's a special education teacher, will be departing at the end of the school year. And Steve Kalinsky, who is coach varsity baseball at EEMS, is also resigning his position. We have retirements of two longstanding employees. First, Amy Peterson Roper, who has over 30 years in education. I believe the last 12 here at EEMS will be retiring at the end of this year and certainly has served the students and community very well. And Diana Haskell, with over 30 years in education, the last 18 and a half here at EEMS as a speech and language pathologist, is also retiring. We still have a couple of vacancies. We are still looking for a special education teacher at EEMS, and unless Mr. Clifford has filled it today, we're still looking for a long-term sub in mathematics at the high school. And we're still looking. Is that correct, Mr. Clifford? Good. So that's good news. We'll conclude my report on a positive note. Unless you have a question.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Item H, Committee Reports. We met last Tuesday at a workshop, and we've come up with some assignments for different committees. Kelly McKenny and Paul Markozian will be on the Transportation and Facilities Committee. Policy Committee will be Kelly McKenny and Joanne Avery. Finance and Budget will be Marcia Jude and myself. And the Personnel Committee will be Paul Markozian and myself. So we discuss having reports of the committees each month and whether we've met or not, and the Personnel Committee has met.
Yes. And would you like me to give my, our report?
Yeah.
Okay. So as Brenda said, we've met, and we've also, we've done some preliminary work on looking at the contracts for, we're going to be negotiating with two groups for new contracts, the ed techs and the teachers. And so we've been reviewing materials in the past contract, and we've also had a preliminary, we had a meeting with the teachers' representatives to go over ground rules. And it's a great meeting, and we look forward to some productive sessions coming up. We've scheduled four meetings to work with them. And we've got a meeting scheduled soon with the ed techs to go over ground rules. So again, we're looking for a productive process there as well.
And I don't believe any of the other committees have met.
No.
Kelly and I haven't, but...
Okay. Thank you. Item I, Old Business. Don't believe there is any. Item J, New Business, Staff Presentation.
And I'm pleased to report that the staff presentation for this evening is going to occur. And I'll let Mrs. Bowles introduce our staff presenter.
Good evening. I am happy to introduce Ben Speed, who's going to get set up here, and student junior Emily McPhail, who is an HCTC media student and an Ellsworth High School student. One of the things that we've been doing as administrators is with the new evaluation system, getting in and out of classrooms. And I was bursting with energy one day after I left Ben's room because Ben has really transformed what he had been doing with media communications in creating a new multimedia design course. But at the same time, as he's created this course, he's really turned his program on its head to incorporate proficiency-based unit by unit. So we asked him if he could come tonight and show you what he's doing.
Thank you, folks, for having us tonight. We appreciate it very much. It's a pleasure to share with you what the program is doing this year, multimedia design. And we were excited to hear that a slot opened up, you know, for a presentation tonight, which worked out. You know, the slot at the Tonight Show, it didn't work out for us tonight, so, you know, we're happy to be here. So for those of you who don't know me, I'm Ben Speed, and I teach multimedia design at the Tech Center, and I have a guest with me here tonight.
I'm Emily McPhail. I'm a student at Ellsworth High School and HCTC.
Great. And Emily is very involved with the show choir at the high school, with Skills USA. She's our class representative. She's actually an officer for the school. She has been nominated to compete in photography for Skills USA. Emily's a first-year student, and so I thought it'd be great to bring her along and share her perspective on how the program operates, but also give her perspective, a student perspective, on how we're moving forward with proficiency-based education. As Mrs. Bowles said, multimedia is a little bit new this year, and so what I've provided in the packet really is kind of a description of what the program is, you know, the different pathways that students are offered in the program, the articulation and dual enrollment agreements we have, different types of training, the standards that we follow. And so I wanted to just kind of quickly go over an overview of what we do and how things are structured. And Emily's going to tell you a little bit about her pathway and really spend most of the time presenting a unit of study to give you kind of a look at what a unit might look like in multimedia design, the strategies that we have when we're working with standards within a single unit, and then, of course, answer any questions that you might have. So, yeah, so what you see here is multimedia design covers many different things. Traditionally, our program at the Tech Center has been video production, graphic design, screenwriting. Last year, a survey went out, and the school agreed to really push this program into new areas of interest. Students spoke, and they told us that they're interested in game design, animation, more graphic design, you know, different areas of concentration. Photography is another, web design, computer systems, and so those areas are offered for students. The way that the program is structured is that all the students over two years are going to get an introduction to all of these units in two-week spurts between formative and summative assessments. But then, for a majority of the time, the students actually get to choose a particular pathway. And for about the last hour of every class, the students have a chance to work on just that pathway. So Emily, do you want to talk about the pathway you selected?
I am in the photography pathway because I'm very interested in visual communication, and we've recently done a lighting project, and there is a project log for that in the packet somewhere.
Yeah, and that's going to be what we focus on towards the end, and that project log, which is the last page in the packet, is what we want to spend a majority of the time, you know, talking with you about. But before we get there, just wanted to kind of give an overview, a little bit about some of the opportunities that students have in the different pathways. And opportunities are really opened up. Traditionally, we've had articulation agreements and dual enrollments with schools like NESCOM or SMCC, where students can graduate from the program, go to those schools, skip their intro course, and get three college credits. Now with the pathways, we have a little bit more flexibility, and we have a little bit more of a chance to work with different schools, right? And so we might have a chance in photography. Yes. So we still have the agreements with NESCOM and NEIT and SMCC. Students can still have the opportunity to apply for credit in college, but now we have even more dual enrollment opportunities. So for instance, Emily has a chance to take up to six college credits this year and six college credits next year. She's currently registering for Photography I course with EMCC and Video Production Basics with SMCC, and those are embedded into the HCTC multimedia program. Works out pretty well for Emily, and then next year, there'll be more dual enrollment credits available as well. So in the packet, we've got the different production and software training and also industry training and copyright law and portfolio and resume building, professional development. I've also included in your packet the multimedia standards that we follow. The third-party assessment that we follow is through the MAB, Main Association of Broadcasters. And so on the second page of that, I've highlighted the unit that I wanted to go over, which was lighting design. And those are the standards stated by the Main Association of Broadcasters for that unit. It's a three-week unit, meaning that we have a chance to introduce the basic production skills and kind of build formative assessments to build those skills until the students can get to a point where they can take a summative assessment. And that's where we kick in to the lighting design unit. What we have up here is actually the Google Classroom forum that we use. And Emily, do you want to talk about, you know, the forum that we have here and how you use it?
Emily, could you come a little closer to the mic?
Sorry.
That's okay.
Mr. Speed just posts on the classroom, and all the classmates get to see the posts, and sometimes we can comment on it or respond to questions. And you can even turn the work in online, which is really helpful because it saves a lot of paper and there's nothing getting lost.
Yeah, my printing has gone down since I've introduced this, you know, which is great, you know. We've saved a lot of paper essentially by having a routine where the students, you know, come into the program. They actually clock in. They have five minutes where they'll do a daily journal to start the day, and then they'll, I'll give them time to actually check the stream for announcements. And so those announcements might be the dual enrollment registration coming up for SMCC. It might be working with the SRI, software announcements. It might be a poll question, who can volunteer for the Skills USA spaghetti dinner? And so it kind of acts as a reminder for the students to kind of check their notices every day. And so Google Classroom has kind of been the vehicle that we've used to design the program, and it really has been redesigned, I believe, from the ground up with the lens of proficiency-based learning. On the left-hand side here, you can see the topics, so students can look at different announcements and different units of study. And so we'll get right into the lighting design. It works as a forum, you know, much like a social media site. So the top entry is going to be the most recent entry. So this is the summative for three-point lighting, for lighting design. So I'll scroll down to the bottom and go up. So the students will get a unit, and I thought it'd be good to share this unit with you folks in particular because this was the unit right after our professional development days in November. And at that session, we were asked to take a unit, take standards, and, number one, put the standards into action statements or I-can statements. So it's more accessible for the students to actually, in action, say that, you know, I can tell you the purpose of different lights and accessories for lighting design, you know, rather than the Main Association of Broadcasters wordings. So, and at that session, we're also encouraged to kind of build up, you know, where do you start and how do you build on those skills? And so we've used the goals, stars, and stairs, and the students have this to look at to see where the unit's going to start, where they're going to go. The last column that I used here was more for the second-year students and those students that are beyond teacher pace, students that can progress through the unit faster, so that they can have some ideas of what do I do when I've mastered these skills? And second-year students can also dig a little bit deeper and, you know, not just sit waiting to think about what do I do next. They can actually have a roadmap of where they can, how they can build their skills. So what you'll see on the forum is first-year students. We typically start off with the forum discussion where, you know, resources are posted, and this is where the saving paper has come in. So I'll post the handouts, and I'll also post, you know, for instance, a handout on lighting design, lighting setups. I've got my lecture notes on there, a couple of different videos, training videos based off a demo. And I post the videos actually before I do the demo, and I post the handouts before I do the in-class demo. And a little bit on basic color theory. And here, for folks, you can see that this is the stars and stairs with those standards. And I think that, I find that that's pretty helpful because the students can actually, I post it before the unit and demonstration happens, so students can come feeling like they know a little bit about what to expect. It's not all a surprise to them. Those students that might need a little bit more time with the material after the demonstration... Those students that might need a little bit more time with the material after the demonstration can then go back to it, re-watch the training videos, look at the lecture notes, and kind of build off of that. And then we see we've got second-year student assignments in here as well for chroma key lighting and doing some green screen work. We have a unit on watts, amps, and volts, you know, so to kind of work with some science equations for calculating power to make sure that we don't blow any circuits, which is a good thing. And then also notes on part of a film that we watched, Visions of Light. And so that, you know, it also has an example of literacy strategies that students are expected to use as they're watching the film. And so then comes the summative. So after a couple of weeks into the unit, they get the summative. And at the beginning of the summative, they're asked to fill out the project log. And Emily, do you want to talk about how you fill out the project log? Is the last sheet here?
Yeah.
This is Emily's project log, so...
It is. So you put your role, job title at the top along with the unit, and you take the directions that Mr. Speed has posted on the classroom and you put it in your own words and fill it in. And then you get to do a little research of your own and you find two to three articles, videos, things that will help you get the knowledge you need to complete the task at hand. And then you plan it out and do the sequence ladder and you fill out what you're going to do and when you need to do it by, and then you get to check it off as you go through it. And at the bottom, you fill out the standards and you put them into your own words instead of just reading them from the standard sheet. You get to actually think about what it is you want to achieve instead of thinking about the grade you want to get. So it's helpful. And at the end, you get to evaluate yourself and think about what you did well and what you might still need to work on some.
Good. And so essentially, for the summative, the goal is for them to fill this out first before they get started. You know, with the formatives behind them, they're ready for the summative, they're ready to plan it out. And this year, one of the things that we've done in the program really is teaching the students how to be resourceful, how to use the resources at their fingertips, you know, going to the library that we have in the classroom, going online to training videos, identifying the resources that are going to help them get through the summative should they have questions. And so this form allows them to do a little bit of planning, for me to look it over and see that, one, they understand the directions, but also that they have some additional resources that are identified. The sequence ladder, that's a bit of planning for them to really know, you know, what do I need to check off, what do I need to do first, and then what happens after that. And really important is for them to put the standards that I've assigned to this in their own words. And so that we can have a discussion about, okay, this is what the standard says it is, this is what you understand it as, and let's just make sure that we're in alignment so that you know, you know, what you're actually applying here. And once they've done that, they can use this as a guide throughout the process. Then at the end, they can come back to it and rate themselves on those standards and do a little bit of a self-evaluation as well. The first couple of times, we got some comments, not from Emily, but we got some comments from students that said, "I did well, I did really well." Or, "No, I struggled," you know? And so we worked on, let's dig a little bit deeper, give me some more. What is it that you did really well based off of the standards and how can you improve? What are the things that you need to work on? So let's get a little bit more substance in there so you can grow and continue to develop in this unit of study. And so that's a place for them to be really honest with themselves of how they did. And also after the demo, you know, we also have a chance to post, this is what's great about this forum, is that we can post, the demo that we did as a class. Essentially, this is their assignment. So I'm asking them to do what we've demoed in applying three-point lighting on a subject. If you flip the page back, the last thing I wanted to kind of highlight in the process before I answer any questions or Emily answers questions is something that came from the PD Professional Development Day in November, which was the next step rubric for lighting design. And this is Emily's as well, so I'm going to let her talk about it, about how she used it. But this was used in the middle of the unit, you know? So we're doing formative assessments throughout the unit, we're doing daily journals every day based off of a term that we've studied previously. So I'm able to see their understanding of the vocabulary. And it's a small enough class where I can really kind of walk around, you know, and check in with students and see, you know, where they're at with the unit and the task. But this is kind of concrete, something I can sort of reflect on at the end of the day. Do you want to talk about the next steps?
So this was kind of just to give you something to look at and reevaluate where you are and what you understand so far. So the first column is what I'm doing well, and you get to think about, hey, I know this and I've got this part down. And then in the last column, you, it's what will I do and how will I do it? And it's kind of what aren't I so firm on and what do I need to work on? So you fill that out.
Great. And in the center of it is all those I-can statements, you know? This is what we want you to be able to do throughout this unit. What are you comfortable with? And then, you know, what do you need to work on? And then after they turn this in, almost like an exit slip halfway through the unit, I can then take this and say, you know what, Emily? You know, I think you're doing really well with this setup. I think, you know, you've got some practice in, let's carve out some more time to practice even more, you know? And let's try a couple other formulas with, you know, figuring out the power of watts equals amps times volts and all those things. And from all the students, I can then, it can inform my instruction for the rest of the unit. So it's been a good model so far. And as far as other comments I have on integrating this into, you know, proficiency-based learning is, what's nice about the pathway side of things and integrating that in the last hour of the program is students have that to really, you know, if they're doing a unit that, you know, they didn't join the program for, maybe they joined for graphic design and were doing a unit on animation, they know every day they're going to have something they're passionate about. And, you know, I can convince them with the classroom projects that, you know, you really want to have a lot of tools in your toolkit, you know? And you never know as a graphic designer when you might collaborate with an animator. So it really helps to build that resume. It also gives us a little bit of flex time as well with proficiency-based. If we're moving through a unit and I have a student that might be a week behind, you know, we can have a little bit of flexible time to have students that are ahead work more on their pathway projects. And students that need a little bit of extra help, you know, it gives us some, a little bit of a flexible structure to kind of bounce back and forth. And it really kind of fluctuates. For instance, this week, we have a unit in Photoshop and working with photo touch-ups, creating postcards, integrating graphic design. And I assigned the summative on Monday. Some students have already finished on Tuesday and others are going to take until Thursday or Friday. And so I tell the students that are finished on Tuesday, you've got a little bit more time. A, you can either go a little bit deeper into this or, you know, we can carve out a little more time with your pathway projects, so.
Just another thing, an evaluator, because he didn't toot his horn enough, so I'm going to do it for him, is one of the things that I loved when I went into his classroom about this is when you look at a specific day, he's got things that are highly differentiated for all kids, which is a key element in structure of proficiency-based. I mean, if you have different types of learners, whether they're visual or auditory, he's got the mixture of the PowerPoint or the lesson or the notes that he's put on there for kids, plus he's got videos. He's incorporating a lot of different literacy strategies because we were part of the main content literacy project several years ago. So those are all in here for kids. So kids have a variety of resources at their fingertips, not to mention if a student is absent. They can replicate part of what they've missed. I mean, you can't ever replicate that face-to-face with the instructor. But it's really helped when students are absent, giving them the opportunity to log on and say, okay, this is what's going on because it is so up to date and the resources are right at the kid's fingertips. So it's done excellent work.
Yeah, and, you know, and Emily's busy. She's doing so many different things for Ellsworth High School. And so if there's, you know, a leadership, Hancock Leadership Event that's coming up that she might, you know, be out and with Ms. Cutney, then she knows that she can check the post and kind of catch up on some of those things. And I know she's going to catch up and go beyond that. But, yeah, this might be the solution to snow days too, right? No more snow days, just log on and get on the Google Classroom and we'll Skype in. You like that idea?
No.
No. So, yeah. Do you guys have any questions for...
I guess I missed a piece. Like, is it just your program that's doing the software or is it available to all, or are you piloting? Or I think I might have missed.
I piloted this, using this, last spring. And I know that several other programs in the district are using Google Classroom as it means. My students tell me, and I actually can see what classes they have in their, kind of doc, I suppose. So I've actually, and this is where I'll see all the different classes. For each pathway, I've set up different classes. So for photography, you know, there's a dual enrollment for EMCC, for Photography I, that's only applicable to the photography students, so I'm not going to post that in multimedia design. Only those three students are going to see this stuff and we'll have a side conversation about that. So, yeah, I know within the district, other programs are...
Yeah, Google Classroom's available to anyone because we all have the Google email, so you have access to Google Classroom. At our school, I'd say there's a handful that are trying it this year to really utilize it as a platform to interact with proficiency-based in the kids. Not all of them are doing it, it hasn't been something that we've required. But I'd say that some are watching what they're doing and I think that it's something that may be replicated more and more as people get more comfortable with it and see how it's being utilized right now. But right now, there's a few that are using it, but not all.
Works as a really nice place to collect assignments, archive them. And then, you know, next year, I can actually use, you know, some of this year's best, you know, entries as the exemplar, right? So I can take, you know, the lighting design best takes and next year show the students this is what last year's students actually, because it saves everything to Google Drive. So that's a really nice thing, the students are, you know, uploading their assignments right to the site.
Oh, I see, it would be a lot of work, like initially to, but then, if you say it, it's great to have for when you do all the work upfront and then you kind of have...
Ben has said he feels like a brochure teacher all over.
Yeah, I can.
I mean, the nights and the weekends, he's at HCTC doing this. He's putting in the time, but he sees the light at the end of the tunnel, like you said. Once it's all in and it's there, then he's just adding additional resources as he goes, but at least it's built. So that's, for a proficiency-based, that's what a lot of it is, is that building it when you're in it and trying to build the units and the differentiation around those. And then, once you get through that, then it becomes easier.
Yeah. And from my experience this year, it's, I think it's been actually a lot easier to build from the ground up with the proficiency-based lens. Even though I have all years of assignments, years of handouts and resources, this is opening up all sorts of new web resources. And I've also bulked up my library in the classroom because it's really great to see the students thumbing through the books. And if you, you know, you come into our classroom, you'll see them go over to the library of books and identify resources for their assignments. They'll have stacks of magazines and books, you know, that they can use for resources as well, so.
I think it's great that you're emphasizing, like, I think the positive of the proficiency base because it's really tapping into what am I learning, how am I going to apply it, where it's, and I just think that's so a piece that maybe we have been missing and it's just important to keep. Because you notice that a lot as you transition into the career world, like you know you learned it, but it's kind of, and if you can just keep applying it and see how it just, it makes a huge difference. And I think it's important for the viewing public and for people to understand like this is where proficiency-based, and I think you've done a great job demonstrating it and really focusing and highlighting that really what you're trying to achieve because it will benefit the students immensely in the long run, it really will. And if they can carry that into college, I mean, it's just, they're going to be a step ahead. It's just, you know, I just wish I had that. I was very, I'm going to get that grade. So I think it's great.
Yeah, and we, you know, I just spoke with, you know, a couple of students who were on break and, you know, and they really appreciated being able to kind of see the transition last year and give their perspective also this year transitioning into college. And with those dual enrollment credits, you know, that helps out a lot as well. And, you know, the college dual enrollment, you know, helps guide the pathways. And we have individual standards for each of those pathways as well. But multimedia, the MAB standards are what the entire program follows.
That's great.
Last year, it was a work in progress where we put the standards on the boards, we'd workshop through as a class. This is much more individualized. It, you know, gives each individual student a chance to put the standards in their own words.
Ben, can you talk a little bit more about dual enrollment and how that works and...
Sure.
...we're partnering with and...
Yeah, definitely. So, for instance, I'll use the student that came to visit. He was a student from Ellsworth High School and he came in and said, "Mr. Speed is going great. I got all the dual enrollment credits." Basically, when he was at HCTC, he enrolled, registered for six credits his first year and three more credits the second year that he was at HCTC. And those SMCC credits were transferred to his NESCOM transcript. Those credits could be transferred anywhere. So what SMCC has done is they've visited the program, they've vetted the program, they've looked at our curriculum map. And oftentimes, they say, wow, you do so much more than we could ever do in a three-credit course because you have them, you know, every day for over two hours. So they've basically aligned their curriculum with ours, we've looked at the syllabus and taken care of that. And then, you know, the New England School of Communications also offers three additional credits and the ability to skip their intro course. So he said, "I walked in with 12 college credits for New England School of Communications. I got to skip the intro course." And all this is free of charge, there's no cost for these 12 college credits to them.
Wow.
And he said also, you know, "I realized that Video I class at NESCOM would have been great for somebody who's never taken a media course." But he was an advanced student, so the second, Video II at NESCOM was more appropriate for him. He understood everything in Video II, it wasn't new to him, but he was learning little nuances and techniques from the professors. So he, you know, he felt comfortable at that placement. So for EMCC and CMCC, we have new agreements with them. And so for photography, that is, you know, a two-to-three-week unit. And lighting design, graphic design, Photoshop, those all apply to it. But, you know, I was pretty open with Emily that her pathway projects that she creates, we're going to have to align them to the syllabus from EMCC. I need to make sure that when Emily walks out the door, she's getting more than that college-level course had to offer so that she can go with confidence knowing that she knows all of those skills.
That's great. So every program has agreements with different schools, either dual enrollment or articulation. either dual enrollment or articulation. And when they're duly enrolled, Kelly, they're an HCTC EHS student and they're that college's student as well. So they get a college transcript. And then that transcript is transferable to any school of their choice. Articulation agreements are just agreement between a particular school and us. So a student has to attend that school to reap that benefit. Dual enrollment's better because kids can be enrolled out of college at that time, but then go wherever they want. So that's, the list that's on there, and every program has different agreements based upon how that community college vets the program.
To walk into college with 12 credits already under your belt that you don't have to pay for? It's huge.
Well, and the confidence piece too.
Yeah.
It makes, oh, it makes a lot of confidence.
Yeah, yeah. And there's a number of scholarships that open up too that, you know, you know, if you have three college credits going into college, you're not eligible for, but when you have six. So, you know, most of our students have the capacity to walk out with 12 in two years.
That's awesome.
Good work.
Great, thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Emily.
Thank you for coming too, Emily.
Thank you, Emily.
Thank you.
J2, Budget Update.
Budget update. It's that time of year again. On the public side of things, it seems as though the budget work is just getting started, particularly with the release of the governor's biennial budget. However, as you know, our staff members and administrators have been working on budgets since back in November. Just want to give you a status update of where we are at this point in time. In terms of FY18 budget development, the leadership team has spent a lot of time working on developing a list of proposed staffing levels for the FY18 school year. Included in that process was a review of enrollment levels and trends. What I mean by that is, at the elementary level, for example, we have class sizes that are larger and smaller. And as they progress up through the grade spans, we may have to look at what staffing levels we need. And they may be different. We may have five teachers at grade two one year, four teachers at grade two the next year because of those fluctuations. So we've looked at those levels and trends. We've looked at current initiatives that we're working on and needs that are consistent with our vision and mission that will serve to advance the school department's programming and service to our students. From that listing of staffing levels that we are projecting, Carolyn Heller, our business manager, and her staff are in the process of updating and amending the personnel side of our accounting software budget to reflect proposed staffing levels. Now, again, that comes with a bit of a challenge. You know, as Mr. Markosian was talking about earlier, we're bargaining with two units, so that presents challenges with budgeting. We also don't know a lot of what's coming down from the state with regard to revenues and insurance levels and things of that nature. But we'll at least have the number of staff members in there for proposal for the budget. The other thing we spent a lot of time working on at the leadership team level is the major items or what we talked about in our meetings as the big-ticket items. And one example would be the replacement of the roof at HCTC or the window projects at Ellsworth High School. There are some big-ticket items that we need to review and make sure are included in our budget proposal. Building-level budgets, we allow those to come in a little bit later. In fact, those are due into the finance office this coming Friday. And I know our administrators and their staff members have been working hard to put together proposals for their programs and their departments that reflect needs and the direction that we want to go. And the good thing about our accounting system is the requests for those budget proposals are created through the accounting system and are entered directly into our accounting software. So it's a really seamless process. So it's really been a great process. We've been working very hard since November. And within a couple of weeks, we should have a final initial expenditure-side draft of the budget. Now, in terms of the revenue side of the budget, it's a little bit more cloudy. We can spend a lot of time working on the expenditure side and be very confident that we're putting together a budget proposal that's appropriate. However, on the revenue side, it's very much unknown at this point in time. As I said, the governor released his state budget this past Friday, including in that was a recommended funding level for education. The next step at Department of Education is for their finance office to take that funding level and run it through the essential programs and services funding model so that that money that can be appropriated to general purpose education can be calculated and the funding subsidy forms can be distributed to each of the districts to determine what type of revenue support we're going to receive from the state. From an initial review of the governor's budget, there are a number of proposals that will impact the level of state and local responsibility for funding education. As I referenced earlier this evening, included amongst those proposals are a number of bills that propose to amend the essential programs and services funding model. Some of those will have a direct impact on school funding. For example, in the funding model, there are federal revenues that are given to schools. One example is through Title 1A for disadvantaged students. Historically, those funds have been deducted from the funding model. However, the governor's budget proposes to not reduce those anymore, but instead increase the number of students per teacher. So the ratios are going to change, which will likely impact us in the form of higher local costs. Additionally, there will be changes to special education funding that we have not been able to determine the level of those yet, but those will be an impact on us locally. Funding for local administration. The governor is recommending not including funding for local administration in this budget proposal. Those are just some examples of those pieces that are going to be vetted over the next four or five months at the legislative level. Now, also included in the governor's proposal is one positive piece of information. It's a reduction of the mill rate expectation. And what that is, is the amount of funds that must be raised locally in order to receive the full amount of the state's share of the cost of education. This year, we're required to raise 8.3 mills against our evaluation in the city of Ellsworth. Right now, the proposal is for that to go down to 8.29. So that provides a little bit of relief. But again, this is the governor's initial proposal. We hope to get a preliminary listing of state subsidy and state aid to education by the first of February. But I remind everyone that that's just preliminary, but it will be a good start for us to look at the revenue side of the budget. Now, our next steps at this point in time are concurrently. Our finance staff is working with the accounting software to put all those pieces that I described a bit earlier together into a first draft expenditure budget. And at the same time, individual department directors and principals will be meeting with Mrs. Heller and I to review in detail their requests for their department. And those meetings include a lot of questions that come from Mrs. Heller and I with regard to what are the reasons for these proposals and requests. Following that round of meetings, those same individuals will present their proposed budgets with or without amendments to the board's finance committee for review. And those meetings will take place over the next three to four weeks. Once we've completed that initial draft and received the preliminary revenue information, we'll move forward with the process. Now, included in that process would be conversations with City Manager Cole and the finance committee of the city council because they are actively involved in our budget development process. But it's a lengthy process. It's a difficult process. It's a challenging process. But again, our ultimate goal is to move our school department forward with a budget proposal that appropriately and adequately funds education for our students in a fiscally responsible manner. We will ensure that we include a update on the subsequent board meeting agendas every month so we can report on the progress that we're making at the finance committee level and any developments from the Department of Education. So unless there are any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Discussion and consideration of superintendent of schools contract.
Need a motion? I move that we amend the superintendent of schools contract in accord with the terms and conditions of employment as recommended.
I second the motion.
You second?
I, yes.
Okay. All those in favor? We don't need to go.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Do we need to go into executive session? Or are we going to do this?
For negotiations?
Yep.
The next item on the agenda is negotiations update. I have placed on the agenda the opportunity to go into executive session if the board so desires. And the purpose of that is when you're dealing with personnel issues of which negotiations are and you want to talk about that information in more detail, you go into executive session. If you don't feel there's a need for that, can report out on where we are at this point in time.
Yeah, I think my report earlier indicated that we're right at the preliminary stages and there's, I don't see a need at this point to go into executive session, so.
Calendar and announcements. Meeting scheduled, Personnel Committee on January 18th, 26th, 30th, and February 2nd. School Board Workshop will be January 24th at the conference room for the Ellsworth School Department at 6:00. Policy Committee meeting to be announced.
Have I picked a date in with Mrs. Avery not here this evening?
Right.
It would be a challenge, but we'll send the email. Because we have some policies to consider. So we'll have Teresa send an email out to Kelly and Joanne to set up a date.
Okay, thank you. And school board meeting Tuesday, February 14th, which is Valentine's Day.
I was going to wonder if we're having our Valentine's.
Well, I wonder if the board may consider holding the meeting on Monday, the 13th.
Is this room available then?
I can check, but if it's not, we can certainly use the library at EMS.
Is that right with you, Jim?
What's the date again? I'll put it in right now.
Monday, the 13th.
Monday, the 13th. Is that agreeable to everyone?
Do we need a motion or we just?
You don't need one.
Okay. So we're going to have a school board meeting on Monday, February 13th. And we will announce the place when we find some place that would take us. A German.
If I may, for the board, the workshop topic on the 24th will be an update from our principals and directors on the status of the transition to proficiency-based educational model.
Oh, good, okay.
Having no further business, I move that we adjourn the board meeting.
I second that. Discussion? All those in favor?
7:52.
7:52.